All right, we'll go ahead and call to the meeting today. The time now is 3:00 PM. The date is January 7th, 2025. Welcome to the Amherst County Board of Supervisors meeting. The first item we have is the invocation and pledge. I'll go ahead and lead both, followed by our reorganization. Y'all staying? All right, let's pray. Dear Lord, thank you for this day. Thank you for the beautiful weather you've given us, Lord. Even though the icy conditions, Lord, we give you praise for every day you provide us. Lord, we ask for your guidance today as we take on the matters of the county. We ask for your protection over our law enforcement, emergency personnel, and all our personnel taking care of any outside activities over the last couple of days and ongoing days as we deal with power outages and whatnot. Lord, we give you praise for everything you've done, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Next item we have is the Board of Supervisors reorganization for 2025. We've got the election of officers. With that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Bryant.
Yes, sir, thank you. It is that time of the year again at our first meeting. We will start with election of officers, and I will open the floor up for accepting nominations for both the chairman and vice chair. I'll start with the chairman. Floor is open.
I'll make a motion to nominate Ms. Tucker for chairwoman.
Okay, we have a nomination. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, eyes have it. Ms. Tucker, congratulations. You are the chair for the Amherst County Board of Supervisors 2025.
Thank you, Mr. County Administrator. Thank you for the nomination. Mr. Wade, board members, thank you. Next up, we have a nomination for the vice chair. I'll accept nominations now. Hearing none, I choose to nominate Mr. Tom Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Excuse me?
I said, aye, I guess. I didn't vote. I did, okay. Aye, I guess.
It doesn't have to be enthusiastic, Mr. Martin. You just have to say so.
Aye.
All right, the nomination passes. Thank you, board. Mr. Martin, do you have anything you'd like to say?
I look forward to working with you, Ms. Tucker, and the rest of the board, obviously.
All righty, moving on. It'll take me a while to get back in the swing of this. Next, we have appointment of liaisons.
Ms. Tucker? If I may, staff made one error on putting this together. The legislative appointee 2024 for the representative to the joint board committee for the school board is Wade Tucker. We had put on proposed that it was the chair and vice chair. That's actually incorrect. Historically, Wade and Tucker have been in that same spot. So I would recommend that we modify that back to Wade and Tucker as staff, as the recommendation. And now you, as the board, please make your decision on how you would like to handle that. But I wanted to apologize for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bryant. All right, board members, you can see the different liaison positions there in your packet. Are there any questions, any suggestions, or is there a desire to move forward as stated?
I'll make a motion to adopt the appointments as amended by Mr. Bryant.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, thank you, and then we will move forward as they are in our packet with the amendment made by Mr. Bryant. All right, next on our agenda is a meeting schedule. In a nutshell, the meeting schedule will stay as it currently has been this year and for the previous years. Is there any discussion on that?
I'd make a motion to maintain the current meeting schedule.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Meeting schedule will stay. Adopt rules of procedure. Are there any questions, any conversation, any changes? Is there a motion?
So moved.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Rules of procedure stay in place, which all of us are familiar with. Next, we have the approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve.
I'm sorry?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to, I was just making sure if we didn't have any changes. Motion to approve. Oh, you're giving me the motion to approve, Mr. Martin?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Agenda is approved. And next, we move on to citizen comments. There's no one here scheduled has written down that they wanted to testify or, of course, have said anything to the board. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we will now close citizen comments and move on to ordinance 2024-6. Mr. Tyler.
Madam Chair, board, good to see you all. I bring for you today, I would say, a rough draft of a first read for our flood hazard overlay district. Over the past 12 months, staff has worked with DCR and FEMA to work on their new flood zone ordinance. If you recall at our last meeting, a special exception actually had some flood zone property in there, and I pulled up that map and showed you all those changes. Staff is not planning to do that today unless you would like some more information. But before you is what at first DCR had recommended to staff for changes. Staff drafted those changes, sent them back at their recommendation, and now we have since had a review from FEMA. Staff has placed this before you all. This was not in your board packet. This came to us on Friday at 5:02 PM. So we now must make those changes in preparation for your public hearing on January 21st. I apologize, I am not at a point to go through these changes with you all as I have not had time to review them. We've been put in quite a time crunch by both DCR and FEMA in reviewing our flood zone ordinance in order to have it approved and sent off to FEMA by February 14th, 2025. However, staff is still confident they can accomplish that. So before you in your packet, there's one ordinance with a few changes. Those changes will stay minus the definition of accessory structure because FEMA did not like it. Other than that, there are additional changes. And on the last page of the packet, a majority of these changes can be found in this box. They're failer boilerplate. We're required to do these. It is my understanding, we do not have a say in them. So with that, staff would like to first apologize for putting you all in a time crunch as we do not like to do this for ordinances. However, we feel as if we've been left no choice from higher departments. And so with that offer, if you have any questions, I may not know the answer today in reviewing this, but I will either send a follow-up email or have them ready for your public hearing if you choose to move forward with it.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Martin?
So, Mr. Creasy, what did they not like about the definition of accessory building?
From my quick review, it needed to follow the model state ordinance, and I copy and pasted our accessory structure ordinance from our zoning ordinance because we were given no clarity or direction on that from DCR.
So is what is in the ordinance that was attached their definition, or?
That's our definition of an accessory structure.
So that's going to change?
Yes, sir, to what FEMA requires.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions of Mr. Creasy? What, Mr. Creasy, what's the deadline for having to get this done?
We technically need to send an approved ordinance to FEMA 30 days in advance of February 14th, 2025. That's impossible. However, if we send it in on the 22nd, the day after our meeting, I've been reassured we will be in compliance.
All right, any further questions? Thank you, Mr. Creasy.
Thank you.
All right, next we've got.
Before we move on to the staff's recommendations, that you direct us to advertise it for the pop.
I told you it was going to take me a while to get back in the swing of this.
Madam Chair, I move that staff advertised ordinance 2024-6.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Motion on the floor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you.
Can I ask one more question? I'm so sorry. We still have to adopt the new maps, though, correct?
That is part of the ordinance, one of the change.
That'll be all done at once.
That's in the ordinances or adoption date, yes, sir.
Yeah, thank you so much.
All right, moving on, we've got the consent agenda. Any questions?
Motion to approve?
Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Consent agenda is approved, special presentations. Mr. Thacker? You're going to talk to us about recycling.
Greetings. So I've been asked to come talk about our recycling initiatives here in Amherst County. I first wanted to start with where we were five years ago because it's often helpful to look back in the past to determine how we got to today. So five years ago, if you'll remember, the green box sites, they were still active at Long Mountain, Burley Hollow, and Boxwood Farms. Of course, there were no recycling capabilities. These were all dumpsters or 100 cubic yard trailers you could back into and throw your trash. Certainly no security, and they were obviously environmentally dangerous and rat-infested. In fact, when we got the last containers out of Boxwood Farms, we had to remediate the soil. So it took tons and tons of soil that was contaminated by the garbage cans. We also had the recycling centers open in Amalon and the Ambryer Shopping Centers. Again, no security. They were conveniently open 24 hours, but they often resulted in calls to the sheriff's office for trash. Often over a weekend, we had to send our grounds crew out there to pick up the trash. Most importantly, though, it costed over $50,000 annually to the taxpayers, and there were no recycling revenues returned. It was just a matter of convenience. Today, we have aluminum compactors at Coolwell and Boxwood Farms. We have cardboard compactors at many sites. We have paper receptacles at many sites. Plastics, scrap metal, and perhaps most importantly, look at all the things we can do at the landfill now. We take tires, we take concrete, dirt, gravel, used motor oil, used auto batteries, electronics, and even household hazardous waste. All those options are available to taxpayers at the landfill. So we talked about the previous five years, but in the last five years, here are things we have done, including that nice little logo on the top right. That's our Public Works logo, emblematic of the county's commitment to recycling and reusing, not just throwing away materials. We've also added recycling capabilities at Coolwell, including plastics and aluminum compactors. At our new Dodge store location, we added a cardboard compactor and scrap metal capabilities. That, again, was a green box site that had nothing there. Same with Boxwood Farms. We have cardboard, aluminum, plastics, and scrap metal. At 60 East, we recently added a cardboard compactor. And at the landfill, the motor oil we recycle heats the maintenance shop. So we collect it all year. We run it throughout the late fall, winter, and early spring. We take scrap metal from citizens and by transfer station personnel, and those landfill recyclable recoveries in part pay for uniforms and other Public Works needs. So when I first got here, we had a contract with Centos for uniforms. We got rid of that. We buy our own things from Custom Inc. now, based on the recycling revenues from the metal that is recovered out of the landfill and out of the transfer station. We also recycle electronics, automobile batteries, propane tanks, and, again, household hazardous waste. That includes paint, light bulbs, pesticides, herbicides, and alkaline batteries. Prior to 2022, the county had an agreement with the city of Lynchburg where people had to get a voucher four times a year. We would send the material over to Lynchburg. Lynchburg would send us a bill for doing it. Now we do it in-house at the landfill. Other recycling initiatives, the green flush restrooms. That was a board initiative in 2020. We installed those at four sites. That was with, is that ARPA money? Stacy, is that correct? CARES money, thank you. Rainwater collections in all of those sites for handwashing. They're completely solar powered, and water conservation in the toilets and the urinals. We also have a leachate aerator. That's a fancy thing that evaporates the water in the leachate lagoon. They saves on the cost of disposal at the Lynchburg wastewater treatment plant. So currently, we have to haul all of our wastewater to Lynchburg. Anything we can aerate and dissipate into the atmosphere, we don't have to pay for. We have recycling and collection bins at the parks and at the admin office. We also do plastic bottle recycling in the school system, specifically Madison Heights Elementary. They had an initiative a couple of years ago where their kids collected a bunch of recycled bottles, and we gave them a plastics bench made theoretically out of those plastic bottles. We certainly couldn't turn it around that fast, but equivalent to the plastic bottles that we recycled. And finally, some recycling truths. So right now, metal, aluminum, and cardboard are the only commodities that consistently produce revenue. So plastics and paper, when we recycle them, cost taxpayers each time. Most recycling is processed by third-party vendors. So Public Works, while collecting and burning the oil, we don't do anything else. We send it off to various regional vendors, including household hazardous waste and electronics. For our scrap metal, we send it to Foss in Lynchburg. And for most other commodities, we send it to Sunoco, which is eight miles from the office. They are a taxpaying entity that's been here since 1995. And we have a collaboration with them for an educational outreach to our Amherst school systems. And today, we do have Mr. Aiden Bell here from Sunoco. If he wanted to ask any questions, he's here to answer them for you. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you. That's very helpful, and I just want to say how much I appreciate what you all do, not only for recycling, but it seems like every time we have a problem of some sort, whether it's a tree across some of our trails or whatever, you all are there to make it right, and deeply, deeply appreciated. Mr. Bryant, the gentleman that came at one of our last meetings that got all this conversation started, and I don't recall the company. Did you ever reach out to him?
We did. We reached out to him. Mr. Thacker and Mr. Lombardo from his office, the four of us met together. He, we went through our entire operations with him, what we do, what he could potentially do for us. I will tell you, he told us verbally multiple times that we ran a really good operation, and he didn't feel like there was a lot that he could do for us because of the distance of where he's at. His company intended to build, or intends to build a transfer station outside of Lynchburg and near Campbell County, and would like to reevaluate making a new proposal at that time. But he felt like because his company's in Brookneal, they were too far to make a real difference for us.
All right, thank you. Any idea what we can do about glass?
That's come up several times, and I've spoken with Aiden at Sunoco about it. Nobody regionally does it. It's just something that's been out of service since 2019. They are looking into it. Elite Recycling, who you mentioned earlier, out of Brookneal is looking into it. Everybody I've talked to in adjacent communities are looking into it, but there's no viable solution in the foreseeable future.
Board members?
Madam Chair, if I may, a couple of questions. So on the used motor oil, is that just what the county is generating, or are you taking it from citizens also?
We're taking it from anybody in Amherst County who wants to bring it to the landfill.
Good to know, okay. And on the paper and plastics, you said that that is costing taxpayers. So we take that to Sunoco.
Yes, sir.
To have recycled. Are we paying them to take it, or is it costing the taxpayers because of the
We haul.
Expertation and that kind of stuff?
Well, we haul it to them, and then they send us a bill for whatever that is.
But in turn, it saves us space in the landfill, so.
You could argue that.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate it.
Madam Chair, if I may. Mr. Thacker, thank you for the presentation, but a couple additional questions. And I'm going to follow along with a couple of things Mr. Martin touched on earlier. The used motor oil, I can't ima, I don't know. How much are you guys getting in? And this is just for my own informational purposes, because I mean.
About five to seven, sorry.
I'm sorry. Are you able to use everything that you get in? Or are you still having to find resources to come and remove it from the property at some point in time?
We use all motor oil that is sent to us. We burn it all.
Okay. So in the past, when it comes to recycling, it's always, and I'm not sure if this is a myth or if it's actually factual, but take the recycling containers. If, let's just say it's the plastics recycling container. If a wrong plastic is placed in that bin, it's always, I've heard this, and I'm not sure if this is fact or fiction, but if it's contaminated with something that's not in that realm of plastics, then it contaminates the entire bin. Is that correct or not?
That is incorrect. So Sunoco currently accepts all plastics we put in the container. They do not consider that contamination.
Okay.
Now, if a container is contaminated with, say, trash, an excessive amount of trash, then we might have to dispose of that at the landfill.
Okay. How often does that happen?
Rarely.
Okay. So from the fiscal aspect of it, what type of returns are we getting on recyclables from what we're doing internally? I hear what you're saying as far as what it's costing us to go to Sunoco, but.
They don't have those figures available.
Okay, all right. I'd be curious to see what the fiscal returns are on the recycling. And then I guess I'll leave it with one open-ended question for you. Is there anything that we can do differently to enhance? I mean, I hear what Mr. Bryant's saying from the other gentleman that came in and commended our program here in Amherst. But I mean, always, there's always ways of improving anything, no matter where you're at, right? From your viewpoint, is there anything we can do to improve what we're already doing? To help us not only with minimizing the amount of space that we're taking in our landfill, obviously, but also to improve the fiscal aspect of it and just the overall operation?
Part of it's education. So part of that on our end is working with vendors like Sunoco to help us identify recycling opportunities we're not already exercising. And speaking with Sunoco, we're doing about everything we possibly can to generate revenue. But part of that also comes in the form of the school system, so educating people not to throw away everything, to recycle cardboard, to recycle metal, to recycle plastics as need be. Often, that onus has fallen on the site attendants who are not really paid to educate people how to do that. They may infer, hey, you could do this or do that, but we don't want to be in the business of telling people how to recycle, what they can throw away, what they can't. We're simply there to receive whatever they bring to us. In terms of upgrades to our sites, we do have one possibility that is in the CIP, which is a recycling container at our Dodge store location. That's really about the only thing we're not doing, but there are so many space limitations elsewhere. You all have invested a lot of money in our sites over the past five years, and because of that, we've been able to upgrade our recycling capabilities and capture more money.
Okay. Well, I think anything we can do to minimize our landfill space, because obviously that's our largest burden. I think everybody in here will agree with that. So, but again, appreciate your presentation. Madam Chair, I'm not sure if this is the right time, but while we had Mr. Thacker here, I kind of wanted to see, I'm not, if this is the right time or place, but where I can wait to the board's comments. But I wanted to get an update on cell two as far as where we're at with that right now.
Okay. So yesterday, Melissa, our procurement officer, put out the bid to begin working on cell two. That was yesterday. The county is still clearing the cell, meaning we're doing our internal operations to do land clearing there so we can minimize outside costs for that. Our goal is to get things laid down by spring and summertime, and hopefully by late fall. Hopefully, we can have it in use. Part of the problem is the bidding process, which we're waiting on now. Another part is DEQ and getting final certification to open that cell. So while we are permitted to do it, there are some lingering questions we have to get resolved between our engineers and DEQ to get fully operational permitted. So we can have a temporary authorization, which we're working on now. So in case there is a lengthy delay, we won't run out of airspace in cell one, and we won't have to transport the material out via the transfer station.
Okay. So have, I'm not sure how y'all's evaluation process goes of the current cell that we're using, but are our projections still kind of still on the same target timeframe as far as usable space that we have in our current cell versus what you guys projected? Or where do you think we're sitting with that?
We're still looking at approximately February of 2026 to run out of airspace, so another 14, 15 months. We'll conduct another aerial flyover this spring, which is required by DEQ, which gives us a better evaluation and verify that that number is still holding. But again, if everything falls into place as we anticipate, we'll have both cell one and cell two concurrently operating by the end of the year, beginning of 2026. So we have plenty of time to ease from one to the other.
And what are you guys seeing in trends in your tonnage? Is it staying pretty consistent?
Yes.
Or have you seen an uptick?
It's about the same.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thacker. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. I've got one more question that I would like, that's information I'd like to pass on to the ag committee. Farm waste. Where are we there?
Could you please define farm waste specifically?
I'm going to start with heavy plastics. For example, plastic that silage hay bales are wrapped up in. It's usually white on the outside, black on the inside. It's heavy. I mean, not heavy, heavy, but it's heavy duty. Can that go in the plastics container at the convenience center?
I'll defer that to Mr. Bell.
I would say that that can't go into the plastic container.
Do you have to come up so we can hear you?
So I imagine you're speaking of a wrap for a hay bale?
Yes.
That wouldn't go in the plastic container. What Brian currently has set up is co-mingle one through seven plastic. So that would include ones, PETs, two HDPs, five polypropylans, and any miscellaneous sevens. And that wrap wouldn't fall under a co-mingle one through seven plastic. That we take, sort, you know, by ones, PETs, two HDP, five polypropylene. It doesn't fit under that co-mingle category. I hope that answers your question.
It does. What I took from that is, no, you can't take that.
No, ma'am, no. No, ma'am, that doesn't fit under the one through seven co-mingle category, which, that's the plastic collection that's set up.
Remember what they put at the convenience center with a pickup truck load of that plastic? What do they do with it?
Garbage can.
They're just regular trash?
Open top or a compactor. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, that was my question. Dead animals, dead farm animals.
Please bring them to the landfill. We'll take everything.
So you can bring them to the landfill?
Absolutely.
Okay. I'll pass that along. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah, I just want to say, Mr. Thacker, thank you for all your hard work at the landfill. Not just there, your team always comes up with new ways to fix problems for the county, so appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Wade.
Board members, any other question?
Yeah, I was just thinking, Madam Chair, that we have not been to a single dumpster fire since opening the convenience. Well, there was the one at Coolwell where the compactor.
Two consecutive days, if I recall correctly, yes.
But other than that, it's been like nothing, so.
Yeah, that was entertainment off of our front porch sometimes. We'd watch it when they're at Temperance, catch fire.
The good old days.
No, they weren't good old days.
No, there was nothing good old days about that.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next presentation will be from Mr. Mann with application power. Mr. Mann? All right, our next presentation will be from Mr. Mann with Appalachian Power. Mr. Mann?
Good afternoon, Board. I have a pleasure to be here and thank y'all for the opportunity to talk about this project. As you're aware, Appalachian Power Company has announced a small modular reactor project on AppCo-owned property in Campbell County, adjacent to Appomattox County and also across the river at the Joshua Falls area of the James River from Amherst County. The SMR project, it would provide clean, reliable energy 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Where we are now is in the early site permit application process. This process, what it would do is help offset some of the funding issues, funding concerns that the company will put on the rate base. So the Department of Energy has a fund for generation projects specific to SMRs that we're going to apply for some of that funding for this SMR project. What we're here today seeking is the board's approval for AppCo to seek, to apply for this grant for the early site permit and just seeking your approval for that, for the project. This will go a long way with Appalachian Power's company's, um, ability to get awarded that grant from the Department of Energy.
Ms. Bryant, do you have something to say?
I want, just want to clarify what, what, and Mr. Mann, I want to just be clear of the expectation of our board. What you're asking for is a letter of support from Amherst County, not necessarily their approval, but a, a letter of support.
Correct.
For your initiative.
Yes, and just a letter of support for the initiative.
And that's in your packet.
Ms. Bryant, thank you for that clarification. Board members, questions for, for Mr. Mann or any questions about what he's asking for?
Now, I, I fully understand what you're asking for. I guess, um, I appreciate the community meetings you did. I think you need to do many, many, many more. Um, honestly, I, I believe that nuclear energy is most likely going to be the solution for our energy needs in the future. I don't believe we'll ever have enough wind or solar farms to do it. And I think one of the things you're pointing out in this letter of support is, you know, not using our valuable land for solar farms and wind farms. That being said, um, I would like to hear more in the future about the safety of this facility. I'm not sure if you're prepared today to tell us anymore about that.
Yeah, so AEP does have, or Appalachian Power, um, goes to AEP, American Electric Power, that's the parent company. AEP's been operating the Cook Nuclear Plant in Michigan for almost 50 years without incident. So we do have a success record with nuclear energy, providing that safe technology. The Nuclear Regulatory Commission will oversee this project. So safety is of utmost importance. Before we create any energy, we want to provide safety to the communities and safety to our employees. So everything will be completely regulated. The new technology, it does allow, it takes away the human error. Should there be some issue within the process of the, uh, energy generation, the plant, the technology will have that shut down on its own. It won't rely on humans. Where, you know, some of the past history, Three Mile Island, et cetera, there were human errors that kind of created this issues. So that's what, the, the good thing about the SMR technology is it does, it's, technology's ever-changing, ever-increasing, and it does take away the human issue that could provide safety. We did receive a lot of questions from the open house. We also had what we called a storefront of the local residences that live around the, the Joshua Falls property. And the questions of the used waste. So the, the waste does not leave the site. It stays on-site. It's, it's buried in, or encapsulated in concrete. So we've got pictures of our Cook Nuclear Plant where 50 years of waste is in approximately acre and a half area. So there's plenty of room at this Joshua Falls location to keep all the used fuel there.
I'm, I'm so sorry, Madam Chair, but if I, if I could, so.
Because this is a very interesting topic and I want us to burn as much as we can.
So that, that's, that was news to me. So the, the waste stays on-site in concrete. So this is pretty close, at least as the crow flies, to the James River.
Yes.
How are you making sure it doesn't leak into the?
Well, that's part of what we're doing now with this early site permit. You know, all the environmental studies, it's, it's years of, of studies and things that go into this approval. And then it's constant regulation after that. So that, that is of utmost concern, you know, is preserving the rivers and the quality of the rivers and the quality of all water for the people in the area.
Is this reactor designed locally?
We don't know where it's going to be designed. We're, we're still exploring the different companies. Like I say, this, this is a new technology and we've really, as we're going through the early site permit process, which is going to be about four years or so, that we'll still be working to try to figure out what is the best fit for this site, different technologies. So some questions were raised, what would this plant look like? It would depend on the type of company that Appalachian Power goes with that would, you know, create the SMR. So there, there are some different areas and we're not, we really don't know yet.
So if we authorize the county administrator to sign, sign this, it's, it's saying we support this, but not necessarily give our approval, which is what I believe.
Correct, yeah. There'll be multiple functions, multiple federal agencies, state agencies, processes that public input will be provided all throughout this whole process.
But after this point, Amherst County really doesn't have a say. Is that correct?
No, y'all, my understanding is that there'll still be public comment. I mean, we'll still have to reach out. Appalachian will still have to reach out to the localities for all this permit process that goes on. It's, it's, um, I do have a, I think there is a slide bar with all the agencies that we'll have to go through. So, you know, the, the, this is an evolving process where we will be in communication with all the localities for the next 11 years, to be honest with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mark, Mr. Adams.
Well, I think, Mr. Mann, you just answered, because I mean, I was looking at your timeline on this slide here and, yeah, I mean, if everything goes perfect, we're still looking at 11 years before this thing will be operational, correct?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
Okay. I, I, I'm, I'm with Mr. Tucker. This, this is, uh, you know, obviously in this, in this, um, venue, I, I don't know what I don't know, right? Uh, I, I would, uh, I would definitely agree with the sentiments from my, my fellow board members that we need. I would love to have more information on this. I know Mr. Wade attended one of your, I guess, town halls for lack of better words, and I'd, I'd love to see you guys do something like this out here in Amherst. Uh, if, I mean, selfishly for my own education, because, you know, I, I, again, as Mr. Martin said, I, I, I definitely think this is, the more we see media and, and moving forward with clean energy, I can see where this can, can, can be the future versus right, wrong, or indifferent as we scrutinize solar farms here. And, you know, I, I'm a country boy and want to protect our farmland and I, I don't particularly want to see, uh, solar panels on land that I could see some Black Angus cows walking around on. So, uh, but, um.
Yeah, we will be having multiple outreach sessions throughout this process. There, there is a website that we have that will stay updated for new things as each step in this process goes through, that will be updated. But yeah, the, the community outreach is going to be integral for this process to, to go forward for Appalachian.
And Mr. Mann, you don't, you don't know us very well yet. We look forward to getting to know you better. But we all have specific areas of interest that, you know, I like to think that we're, each one of us have a subject matter that we're really tuned into.
Yes.
And Mr. Wade, when I have a question about this, I go to Mr. Wade. I know you probably got some questions or something that you wanted to say.
No, I, well, I just want, if you don't mind, Madam Chair, uh, I just want to thank you for coming out. I know I talked to Jeremy about getting y'all out here to start the community engagement. I think the event I went into over at the Regional Alliance last month, two months ago, I can't recall.
December 5th, yeah.
December, yeah. Uh, I thought that was a, a great outreach. Uh, there was hundreds of people there. Y'all had the different stations set up to kind of walk folks through the project. I think that community outreach is going to be key to keeping this thing moving forward. So I, as I said at the last meeting, I do think nuclear is the future for the energy issues. With that, I'll make a motion that we, uh, sign the attached letter of support. So, thank you.
Board members, any questions? Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Wade. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And I do appreciate the opportunity and look forward to working with y'all in the future.
Really look forward to seeing more of you.
Thanks, sir.
Power back on in Amherst?
You almost made it through.
We are working at that. Um, we are sending out updates several times a day. But yeah, we have extra crews in the area. Lynchburg is loaded up. Uh, we bringing in more crews this evening too. So we, we are aware of the concerns and working diligently on, on bringing that back up.
Good answer. Good answer.
Thank y'all.
All right, board members. Next up, we've got a discussion on the fiscal year '24 audit. And we have Mr. Bantam, Ms. Fox.
Yes. Good afternoon. Thank you for having me. Um, I'm Chris Banta. I'm the audit partner from Brown Edwards with oversight of the county's audit. Uh, once again, I want to thank everyone for having me today. Uh, I want to thank the county team, Stacy, everyone at the schools, the service authority, everyone for getting us to this point. Um, as you may recall, we just finished up the 2023 audit in the summer and here we are already wrapping up the 2024 audit. So it's a testament to your team for their hard work getting us to this point. And, um, what we're going to do today is go over the audit results, the process at a pretty high level. The document continues to get pretty long. Uh, they're now up to almost 200 pages. A lot of new standards have been coming out over the last decade. This year, there was a little reprieve with some of the new standards. There was nothing new this year, so that helped us get the job done on time. But it wouldn't be done without everyone's work, uh, both of the county and my team as well. Uh, this process starts in March. Uh, we start reaching out to the county and the schools to coordinate the work, schedule everything. We step away, we plan everything internally at our, at our office, and then we come out in the middle of the summer. We do some interim work. We then step back while the management closes their books. We come back out in the fall and we work on the financial statements focusing on the numbers, uh, after we've put the compliance aspects behind us. And then we prepare the financial statements with management's approval and then we issue in, uh, on time this year by the December 15th deadline. So today we will go over the, the results, pretty high level. There are three phases to the audit and I'm going to go through each phase and the results of that, of those phases so that you can understand just, you know, how we segment the audit and then what was the conclusion. The, the primary purpose that you engage us is Phase 1. Phase 1 is the financial statements themselves. When I say the financial statements, I'm talking about the 20 or so statements, uh, the balance sheets, the income statements for each fund and the aggregated entity-wide statements, followed by 100 pages of footnotes, followed by 20 pages of required supplemental information, followed by another 20 pages of supplemental information, and then 20 more pages of statistical information. Those financial statements, auditing those, ensuring that they're presented in accordance with government auditing standards, that's the primary purpose of our audit. And the result of that is an opinion. Are these financial statements prepared in accordance with those standards? And happy to report that you received a clean opinion, uh, which is the highest level of assurance we can give on a set of audited financials. So, uh, I just want to emphasize, don't take that for granted. Uh, we start every audit at Amherst with the expectation that we're going to get to a clean opinion. You just never know what's going to happen as we dig into the books. Every year, we start with a blank slate. Uh, there are new things, new standards, so you really never know what that endpoint is. But we have an expectation that we'll get a clean opinion and we'll be able to issue that and we're happy to report that, uh, again, this year. Uh, the second phase of our audit is, you are clearly a government entity in Virginia. Because of that, we have to perform your audit in accordance with government auditing standards. And those standards require us to take a deeper dive and have more transparent reporting when it comes to your processes and your procedures to prevent fraud and to ensure that your financial statements are clean, that they don't have errors throughout them so that we can issue a clean opinion. What makes that different than a regular audit of a nonprofit or a private entity is that if we have findings during that work or during that analysis, we have to report that to you. And the findings can be two, in two phases. Number one, you could have a problem with the design of your processes and your procedures. It could be a situation where you don't have adequate documentation or policies to prevent fraud, to prevent error. And if we saw that, we'd have to report that to you as what we call a significant deficiency or material weakness. In addition, you may have, fine, your policies may be set out clearly and with, and designed properly, but maybe you're not executing or following those properly. If we see that situation with errors in these financials or we detect fraud or things of that nature, we'd have to report that to you as well as a material weakness, uh, in internal controls. Uh, I'm happy to report there was only one internal control matter this year. It's the same one has been there for, I think, maybe probably a decade now. There's a small team at the schools and because of that, there's certain functions from a financial reporting standpoint where there's some overlap. It's an inherent weakness. It doesn't mean that we found any fraud or any errors that raised, that were a result of that. It's just an inherent weakness over there that we've, that we've seen over, since we've been doing your work. In addition to that, in that second phase, the Auditor of Public Accounts of Virginia gives us a set of compliance matters that we have to follow in a manual, it's about 100 pages long, of different items that we have to look at, whether it's at social services. It's, uh, testing your census data that the, that the actuaries calculate your pension liability with. Could be work at the sheriff's office, uh, social services, looking at your conflict of interest statements, all of those things. If we had significant findings from that standpoint, we'd have to report that to you. And happy to report, um, there was only one small minor budget item that we had there, a few budget overages, um, from a few line items there that were not deemed significant, but they are reportable, uh, findings there. The third phase of your audit is the fact that you are, uh, you do receive a significant amount of federal funding. I think you had about $19 million of federally funded projects this year. We have to perform what's called a federal single audit. And what that means is that every year, when we do your financial statement audit, we also have to select these big programs. And the programs that have been large over the last couple of years have clearly been CARES Act or ARPA or ESER over at the schools. A lot of that residual COVID, uh, funding. Every year, we have to select programs that meet certain criteria. We have to test these big programs once every three years. The COVID funding has been deemed high risk by the federal government, so they require us to test that every year. We tested, uh, three programs this year, uh, the ESER program, uh, from over at the schools, the, the CSLRF program for the countywide, and then the Economic Adjustment Assistance Program. Those are the three programs that met certain thresholds, required our testing and then our auditing. And they actually accounted for about 50% of that $19 million of federal expenditures. Uh, we did not have any specific findings for that testing. We did have one finding related to filing the audit within nine months of year-end. That didn't happen last year, clearly happening this year. We got the done, the audit done this year, not only by the state requirement of December 15th, but we're also getting it done within 30 days of that for the federal, um, federal reporting requirement. So, um, happy to report that that finding, it happened because of late audit last year, not happening going forward. So, uh, we do expect that finding to go away. Uh, that's the three phases of the audit. I have a few other matters to talk about, but I wanted to open it up for questions about the financial statements and the financial audit before I move on to a couple other bullet points.
Board members? Adams, you look like you got a question?
Well, yeah, I've got some questions and comments and so, and I'm not sure, excuse me. I'm not sure if this is going to be, who I need to direct this to, but, um, obviously this was a lot of information to digest and I'll show up here anytime. I appreciate the audit being on a timely, um, fashion this time. When, when you, when you were talking about the, the, the deficits, I guess, in revenues that you were noting just a moment ago.
Um, deficits in revenue? Now, um, you're talking about the budget findings?
Oh, you.
Those are an expenditure standpoint.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm, I'm going to, my questions are, um, in the, the shortfalls. And again, I guess, Mr. Bryant, I'm not sure if this is going to need to come from you and Ms. McBride or, or from you, sir. But, uh, when, when I looked at page 77 of the document, I mean, when we were looking at revenues for the county, it appears to me, and this is where I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, that it looks like we're about 2.1 million short in revenues for the last fiscal year. Am I reading that appropriately?
It's, um, if you want to go, so I would say it's, uh, you're under what you budgeted, yes. Yeah, by 2.1 million.
But, yeah. So we set our budgets based on the, the projected amounts, correct? So how, how is that going to impact us? Again, that, this is why, I, I know you, I, I. Again, this is why, I know you, I emphasize the timeliness on these things because of this exact reason. You know, when we're trying to set our budgets and we're $2.1 million short in revenues, it's hard to budget going forward. So what type of implications is this going to have on us going forward? Have you guys had an opportunity, Mr. Bryant, Ms. McBride, to discuss that yet?
We can talk about it, but can we table it?
Oh, we can table it however long we need to. I just, I mean...
We can talk about it after he finishes presenting, because that can get complicated.
Okay, sure.
Okay. You got any other questions on that?
Oh, I'll have some more.
Okay. I mean, if there's ones I can answer, then Stacy can kind of...
No, no. So maybe you may clear some of these up.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So is that a, would you like me to stay for that later conversation? Because I'm willing to answer questions now if you have some more that I can.
And this may be something, based on Ms. McBride's statement, this may be something we just need to discuss.
Okay, okay.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions on the financial statements or the opinions or the compliance items I spoke about before I move on?
Everybody good?
I'm just curious. What were the line items that were over?
The line items that were over, so if you look at page 77, you'll see that at a highly summarized level, there were no significant overages, but I believe the detail, there's a more detailed budget, the actual item in the back, that's another supplemental schedule. But let's look at the finding. The finding actually... Okay, Stacy, if you want to...
The J and D, the Juvenile Detention Center and our community development projects.
Ms. McBride, it might be better if you come up with a light.
So as noted in the management letter with the responses, one of the items is the Juvenile Detention Center, and it was a math error on my part. I had you all transfer money around, but I missed an AP when I did that. And the other one is due to how the auditors group things versus how we group things. And we were over because of some community development projects. I had anticipated extra money in certain lines that got moved to a different group. But I'll pay attention to that little department better next time. Those are the only two items that were over. And it was a total of roughly $33,000. $30,000 at the J and D, at the Juvenile Detention Center, and about $3,000 in our community development projects. That stuff is like the EDA incentives, the Brockman Recoupment Program we have with the agreement we have with the town, and a couple other items. Because the EDA pieces got pulled out to go under economic development, I didn't have any, the extra money I thought I had to make that department within budget. So I'll know that going forward, and we won't have that mistake again. And everybody makes mistakes, but hopefully, I'll catch that last one, too, with the detention center next time. Trying to transition between systems. I missed one of the APs.
Martin, does that answer your question?
Well, it does, but is the J and D kind of like the jail where we're...
Juvenile detention, mhm. It's a regional agreement. And it was more because we were transitioning between the two new, the old accounting system and the new accounting system. Had to manually record some APs. I missed one till later on in the audit process, so it didn't get counted in the transfer that I requested. So that's all it was. Just a math error.
Mr. Few?
I have no questions.
Okay. Just to talk about a few other things, each of you should receive two other documents from us. One is an internal control letter. As we perform your audit, if we see suggestions, we already talked about significant items, which was the only item, reportable item in the audit, was the school incompatible functions report item. We also come up with best practices, suggestions, things like that. That goes in that internal control letter. The one thing that's nice to say and report today, we have no new items. One thing that you can find assurance in as a member of governance is if you don't see new items coming up. That's one of the things that when I serve on boards, I like to see only old items, and I like to see those old items go away over time to the extent possible. But definitely no new items this year to report there. And the final document is a letter from me as audit partner to you as governance. While you receive a clean opinion, sometimes the journey from start to finish could be a little challenging. Sometimes you could receive financials that require significant audit adjustments. You may have disagreements with management. You may have situations where management decides, I want to get a second opinion from another auditor because I don't agree with you. If any of these situations occur from the inception of our audit to reporting that clean opinion, I have to report those to you. Happy to report, very clean report there. We had a few items that we deemed immaterial that we pass on at the financial statement and work paper level. A lot of those are kind of like self-correcting items that we just pass on. No significant audit adjustments. The only adjustments we had are things that we work with the county on each year because they're one-time closing items that we do 100 times a year. Management does once a year, so we kind of work with them on that. But no disagreements, no second opinions, nothing like that. The last part of that letter, you will see another letter, but that letter is not on Brown Edwards letterhead. It is on the county letterhead. It is the management representation letter. When we're completely done our audit, we've done everything we need to do. We've prepared the financials. Management reviewed them. When we're done and everything's been done on part of the audit, we give this letter to management. They sign it. That letter just says, we're not aware of fraud. We've told you everything that you've asked. We've given you everything you've asked for. We've provided all the minutes. We are in compliance with all of our federal spending. Once they sign that letter, we agree on the date. We get that letter from them. We date this audit, and we're done. So we provide that letter to you as governance so you can see what management is representing on behalf of the county as a whole. Any other questions or any questions on those communications?
I've got a question. I don't know if it's for you or for our finance director. Glad to see that y'all were able to finish, I guess, early. What led to that? What made this year different from previous years?
Stacy, you want to talk about that a little bit?
We had a, I was without an accountant for about seven months in the last audit. Also, transitioning to this new software just takes up a lot of time. We're getting to the point, I have a person I've had on staff now for about 18 months, and she's really picking up on things. And then we've transitioned, so now we're just doing the cleanup and the processes, and we'll get our, actually, the county manuals next on the list, hopefully, in the next couple of years. So I think it was just a culmination of all those things, plus having, to work out the kinks. Payroll was a huge nightmare for three or four months. And just digging in, just getting the data right took a lot of our time and without a lot of staff. That's just how it happens. But we've been able, we got all that in, and this year, we just tried to make sure we focused on this as much as we could, and nothing. And the CARES money and the ARPA money gave us a bit of a headache, too. I will say that that was a lot of extra audit work that we weren't used to for the single audit. There's a lot of places that actually paid people to come work for them just for that purpose. We did not do that. It just wasn't worth it. But it was a lot of detail that the feds required for those two large sums of money. The schools had the same headache, so I think we're in a good place. I don't think we're going to have this issue again.
Well, I'm glad to see real-world benefits from the investment we made in that software, so this is good.
It is getting much better. It's definitely getting much better.
I have a follow-up, which is kind of related.
Mr. Martin?
It's related to Mr. Adams' question about the shortfall. So it looks like the majority of that was basically property taxes that we projected to receive, but they weren't collected, right?
Not technically. We didn't adjust the budget because we had enough money to cover between what we had appropriated with general fund monies for capital projects. The Personal Property Tax Relief Act funds were counted twice. So we overestimated by that $2.1 million. And the difference between that and the $3 million is the fact that the values came in less than anticipated. So we have fixed that problem with the commissioner, and we'll make sure we have the right number going forward.
So you projected that we were going to have more revenue than we actually?
Yeah, we did. And I, yeah, it just was an overproduction. It didn't affect the end of it, so I didn't ask you guys to adjust it back down. It wasn't, we had enough other revenue in other places. It wasn't necessary. But next year, for this coming up budget, we'll definitely take that into account and make sure we get the right number. Best I can tell you. The majority of it is that. That was double counted.
I would have to, we may have to agree to disagree that it didn't affect the end. Because if I'm balancing, if I'm balancing numbers and you're balancing numbers off of what our budget projections are, if we're $2 million short because of a calculation, yeah, we've got the money there to pay for everything, but our numbers are still going to be skewed.
We can agree to disagree, or we can talk about it offline. It's a difference of opinion on how we look at things.
Well, I mean, numbers are numbers, so...
Yes, sir. And if we want to get into those details, we can. All I'm saying is it's, it might be easier to discuss it offline when I can have all of my information there.
Okay.
Is that satisfactory to you?
Yeah, I just, again, for, I mean, we're getting ready to get into the heat of the budget season. And I think for projections for CIPs and big projects and our normal day-to-day operations, we can't have that size, I mean, a $2 million deficit. That's, whether that's accurate in the right terminology or not, that's a sizable...
It is not a deficit.
Oh, okay.
You have a net change of about $300,000 and some thousand dollars, and that means that out of the $2 million-plus that you used for CIP and supplemental, you only used $300,000.
I can say, not being an accountant and knowing this stuff like you know it, when I see the number in front of me, my feeble mind has to be confident that is the number. That's how much money we've got to spend or work with. That's, very simplistically, that's what works for me.
I mean, just, so accounting for dummies, which is what I am, right? So, thanks for agreeing with me. So we did the budget, right?
Correct.
And we projected $30,756,000 to come in, right? And we actually brought in $27,652. Well, at the end of the day, when we did all the budgets, you know, it was pretty tight, right? Because we were talking about, okay, we have enough money to put school resource officers in. All that was based on this. So at the end of the day, where did the shortfall come from? Or, obviously, you said it wasn't a shortfall, but where did we find that $2 million from?
Sales tax and interest earnings was the majority of it.
It came in someplace else, over.
Yes. We were over in other places, under in that place.
That makes perfect sense.
That's what I'm saying. We actually budgeted to spend $2 million of our general fund. We spent $300,000 and some change.
Because we took in more money in other places.
More money and spent less in other places. When you do the actuals, that's how it comes out.
Right. Accounting for dummies.
Yeah, I'm in the same position as Mr. Martin, accounting for dummies. But if we, if it was not underbudgeted or overbudgeted for the revenue, and we would have been accurate with that final number that was budgeted amount, that means we would have gotten an additional $2,000, I mean, $2 million of revenue, correct?
Yes, sir. And I understand what you're saying, and I could have come back and made a lot of adjustments just to move money around. I did not do that because there were sufficient funds in the revenue codes.
I get what you're saying. I'm not disagreeing with that whatsoever. But at the end of the day, we were still $2 million short in that revenue projection. You got it. You made up for it in other places, right?
Yeah, because I don't work on one line.
Nobody said you did. I'm just saying that at the end of the day, if our projection for the personal property tax had have come in to where we projected it had been, we'd have been additional $2 million more to the good.
Correct.
Right. That's all I'm saying. I just want to make sure I'm understanding that correctly.
Correct.
Okay.
So moving forward, we just...
I will fix it. And in the next budget, you'll see increases to your sales tax and other lines that will make up the difference in changing that back to where it needs to be.
I appreciate your explanation. Now it makes perfect sense to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're good? I don't want to walk way too far.
Wait a minute. Any other questions? Just a few, any questions? Wade, you good? All right.
That's all I had. If anyone, thank everyone for their time. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate you.
Thank you.
It was good news you shared. All right, next, we've got new business appropriation revenue.
Stacy.
Where's Stacy?
Well, I lost it, but at some point, we have to accept this, correct? Do that at the next meeting?
Well, our recommendation was that we do it today, but I don't know what's the pleasure.
I needed to walk them out. I apologize.
I'll make a recommendation that we push the acceptance of the audit to the next January meeting.
Okay. Is a motion on the floor by?
It's time to digest it.
And I just need to make a, and I was going to do this at one, because I'm not going to be here the second meeting in January because I had an unexpected business trip that came up this morning. Can we do it? How much, what kind of time constraints are we under for this?
Right, if we pushed it back to the first meeting in February, what does that do for us?
It just gives me a bunch of emails from different agencies to get it to them because I'm required to give it to VRA, to CAMPS, to the DHC D. There's another one that has asked me for it. Usually, the clearinghouse, they do the clearinghouse now. DCJS also is waiting on it as well.
Can you do that, or is it just going to jam you up so badly?
No, it's fine. I mean, I'll just keep telling them we're waiting on approval.
Answer is yes, you can push it off?
I can push it off. It just, I just have to keep telling them we're waiting on approval from the board.
Okay.
Well, can I just, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So, well, the guy left.
He did.
I mean, he's done his audit, right? And he said, this is what we found. We either accept what he found, or we go out and hire another auditor to come in. If we accept it, that doesn't mean we can't still ask questions, right?
Right.
Correct.
Well, I guess you're exactly right. I mean, we can't change what...
We can't change. So I don't, I don't see why we can't accept the audit. And then in February, I'm fine either way. I'm just offering.
Well, I think, Mr. Martin, you make a good point.
Yeah, I agree.
And come back in February and have further discussions on what we need to look at.
Everybody agree with that?
That I will amend my motion and that we accept the audit as presented.
I'm okay.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes.
I'm not moving because I got to do the next one. Sorry? I'm not moving because I got to do the next one.
Okay.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I may.
Yes.
And I would, I'd just like to get the input from the board members and from county staff. For me, this is nothing for us to be quick with, right? I don't, in my opinion, this is nothing for us to be, to take lightly, not saying that we are, but to move with any... I guess my end point is, would we be willing to entertain discussing the findings of this in a workshop versus a board meeting? Because, again, I don't want to feel like I'm rushed to ask questions because I want to be able to understand this. And I think we all need to understand this when we dealing with a budget of this size for our county and for our school system.
I want to make sure I understand your concern. Your concern is not allowing, not signing off on it. That's not your concern. It's digesting and having time to ask questions.
Yeah, we've already voted to sign off on the audit.
Right, that was my question.
But taking the information that's been provided to us in this document, right, and having a workshop session between us, the board members, and county staff to ask the questions that we may not have the right answers for, because I'm in no different position than Mr. Martin. I mean, I understand numbers, right? Run a business, and I understand budgets and things of that nature. But when we're dealing with numbers of this size, as much money as we have coming from different places and going out to so many different places, I want to make sure that I understand... and going out to so many different places, I want to make sure that I understand it moving forward for a budget.
If I could add on to that.
Yes, sir.
I think I think what you're saying might have less to do, maybe with the audit, because to me, the audit is saying the money has been spent correctly the way we anticipated. What I think you're getting at, and what I would, and what I fully support, is I think our first budget meeting, right, which should be coming up really quick, is let's have a really good discussion of where the county is financially, right? Let's talk about our projected revenue, let's talk about our debt service, let's talk about all that, let's talk about our reserves, and let's just get a good understanding of it at that first budget meeting.
So that is what's scheduled at your first budget meeting. We flipped your schedule this year and put the CIP and the supplemental on, at the back end. We will go over your revenues, the operating budget, which also includes your debt service, and I usually have a presentation of where your reserves stand as well.
Yeah, I guess I'm, and
Unless you want to break it up.
I guess what I'm saying, Ms. McBride, and we do however y'all want to do it, is, you know, before we even start talking about spending it, let's talk about where we are financially.
And that is the change that we made. So that's, that's what's going to be different this coming year than the last few.
That makes sense.
Is we're going to start off with where we stand.
Yeah, that and what they ask, you know, hopefully it'll be balanced in our mind, but obviously you all have your opportunity to change it.
And when is it?
It should be the second meeting in February.
Well, then, that's, that's my question. So, what I thought I understood y'all say was that you wanted to have something outside of a regular board meeting, because you feel like you're rushed because we've got other businesses to attend to.
That's correct, yeah.
Well, that is a budget workshop that day. It's not a
Else but that.
There'll be a budget workshop and a meeting, but we'll have a budget workshop before your meeting.
And how long have you got that scheduled for?
We haven't set the times yet.
I'll work through you, Ms. Tucker, as the chair, on the times.
Because, I mean, I, I understand what we're saying. We feel like we have been rushed, we have this, this, and then a board meeting too.
Well, is it a night meeting or a day meeting?
It's a night meeting. This is what we've normally done. We used to have, I will say this, and, and tell me if I'm speaking out of turn, we can talk about it another time. We used to do one every, almost every Tuesday, and it got to where we tried to tie them and get everything in on that meeting day, so we don't have one in the off week where we broke things down even more. Does that make sense? Like, in February, if we meet on the, I think it's, I don't even know, like, the 18th, 20th, whatever day it is, that following week, we would have another one. And then we would have one on the day that you all have a regular meeting, and then we would have one on the in-between. So we broke it down in smaller pieces, which gave more time for discussion. The impression I had gotten over the last few years is we didn't want to have those extra meetings, if at all possible.
Yeah, I think, I mean, everybody here works, we've got other jobs.
Right, that's what I'm saying, because we tried to
So I think we've got to balance that, everybody's time constraints here, with having time to digest this stuff and not feeling rushed.
Why don't you just, the first one, instead of doing it before the board? That is a standalone, I'm just throwing it out, do it as a standalone meeting so we can kind of have an open discussion about things moving forward, and then
Well, it is a standalone meeting.
But it's before our board meeting, so
Correct.
Right, so you, so we, should we back it up a little earlier, that same day, or do it on a different day? I guess I'm, I don't understand what you're trying to ask us to do.
I want to make sure we're not rushed because we have to start another one, that's what I'm saying.
I think you give additional time on the day, so you have more time on the day, because we'll all be here.
That's fine.
Like, if we backed it up to, like, 4 o'clock and cut it off at 6:00 or 6:30, just so you guys can grab some dinner and then go back to work at 7:00. Is that a, a, your thought process? Am I thinking in the right direction?
Does that work for y'all?
Works for me.
Mr. Adams?
Sure.
Well, now, don't just say, looks like you're getting a headache.
That can be the first of many meetings, maybe. We'll see how it goes.
It's either that or we, we go to a different day.
I think, I, I understand what you guys have done, and I appreciate being respectful of everybody's time, but, you know, this is the one time of the year that I feel is very important, right? When we're, we're trying to nail down this budget. And, again, I, I don't, I know people get tired of maybe hearing about people bring up the past, but I remember back in the day when we did budget workshops, they were standalone times, Mr. Bryant, you were here, where, you know, we had the time to digest this stuff, and when you've got, when you've got five board members plus county staff digging into a budget, you know, a whole lot more heads are better than one or two. And that's no discredit to anybody, but this is just a good checks and balances for all of us, right, to understand this. I, I, I just feel rushed sometimes when we're dealing with this stuff.
So why don't I send out the budget calendar to all of you? We'll make some suggestions, Stacy and I will put together some recommendations to make sure we're giving you guys time, and then you provide me your feedback, and then I'll, we'll redistribute it back out. Does that work?
Got to order some more Kit Kats for Director.
And I think, I mean, if we're going to have it ahead of a, of a night meeting, you just got to leave us a little block of time to go get something to eat, because I'll be all grouchy if I'm hungry.
Yes, ma'am.
We don't, we don't do hangry people.
I'm not the only one.
I can testify to that.
I've got some reserves, so, I mean, I'm okay.
All right, thank you.
I still have the next one.
All right, I'm going to wait for him, yeah, wait for, tell him we can get back.
That is really loud. Don't eat the Kit Kat.
Stacy, I would say that, that was a great suggestion to move the revenues and the projections up to the first meeting versus how we did it in previous years, where we're being asked to rate these things
Taking your projects first.
Yeah. Without knowing the money. I think that will clarify a lot of the issues here, because projections, you can make those projections, you can see what you had last year, you already have all of those numbers. Hopefully that clears up and clarifies some of these questions. It will, for me, anyway. So I think that's a good suggestion, whether it was
I think what I heard was we want to know we can operate, and then we'll deal with the other pieces later.
Yes. Yeah, we, I mean, we need to know what money we have before we go to spending. So, I, I appreciate that.
All right, ready to move forward? Appropriation revenue, Amherst County Public Schools, Ms. McBride.
So the Amherst County Public Schools Board has approved four grants and a donation from the Education Foundation, and have asked that we appropriate those funds into their budget. That is, we have in the past placed these on the consent, however, we've had a shift in how we are doing this process. So, the grants are straightforward, some are education grants, and, and one is a construction grant, and the, and the donation from their Education Foundation is for, I, I did not request information on what they were spending that money on, but it's, it's all money coming to them from other outside sources, it's not coming from us.
Will you just answer my question? My question was, what, what donation?
It's $10,000, but I don't know what they're
But it came from their foundation.
Their foundation, mhm.
So I think it's, I'm sorry, Madam Chair. Can I speak?
Go ahead.
All right, so, I think it's great that the schools go out and apply for these grants, and they've been successful. So you mentioned that usually these are on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
Now we're switching it. Why did we do that?
At my direction. So for very simple things, we've put, historically, we've put everything on the consent agenda. I've asked Stacy to start putting things that are a bit more complicated, or a bit larger funds, on the agenda, so it gives you an opportunity to understand it better. So it's really for no other reason than for your understanding, and, and, so we can be here to explain it if you have questions.
If you give us a chance to talk about it, it's going to complicate.
Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant, I appreciate you doing that, but I'm going to take the heat on this one. It's, I mean, ultimately, this is because of me raising cane, because of some
There's.
There's the problem, right? I mean, you, you guys know how I am with money, but, I mean, the thing is, when, when we're dealing with, with big transfers and appropriations, I think it's easy, as we saw a couple months ago in our consent agenda, no All right, nothing, you, this was, this was a practice that you guys had been doing, I wasn't aware of, right? So even though I appreciate you, Mr. Bryant, jumping on it so, this is because of me, okay? And this is a prime example, as I asked Mr. Bryant about this morning. Dr. Wells came before us, what, a month or two ago, with his presentation for the school grant, for the construction grant, right? $6.7 million that they were awarded. Well, we also remember, in that presentation, there was leftover funds that we were sure that we were going to get in return to where we can do something with, right? That I feel very strongly about. And I need a clarification about this. Mr. Bryant cleared it up for me, that this 6.7 has to go toward the construction. However, we fronted this money, right? So I want to make sure that it's noted that we're going to get our return, right, from the funds that we put toward this program.
I don't quite remember it. Is that what we decided, that we were asking for 6.9 million back?
No.
No.
Didn't ask that.
They received an additional grant of 6.7, 6.7 million.
6.7 million.
And Ms. Dr. Wells told us that he would come back with 1.2, and at that point, we could decide how we would use it. One of the options would be that we could apply it towards the funding, towards debt service.
Debt service.
And so, I met with him today, asked after Mr. Adams' question, I met with him, and Ms. LaConne, she was here with us today, and Ms. McBride, and assured that that 1.2 million set aside in two different funds.
And that's what you're speaking
And I sent, I sent an email to all of you today that includes that, that breakdown.
Fair enough, good.
Any questions? We don't need to take any action on that, do we?
You got to, you got to appropriate it.
Madam Chair, I'll, I'll make the motion to, to approve the, the, is it, is it transfers and appropriations to the school system for the 6.942 million?
Motion on the floor by Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes. All right. Public Safety Director?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Thank you for having us today. This is in addition, we're requesting to our fire training facility, our burn building. As you all know, you were gracious enough to let us use some funds that we're in, what we call our emergency service capital budget. These are funds that are traditionally used. We come to you all to appropriate those for repairs to fire stations or major purchases there. Some of those funds have been put back, not used year after year, which is a good thing. And when we do that, that's what you paid for the original burn building with. Last year, we had in the capital budget, accounting capital budget, two appropriate funds for the addition of the burn building, didn't make it through the party list, which we completely understand. The Emergency Service Council is felt very passionate about doing this project, and actually have asked if we can come back and use some of their capital reserves to do this project as well. Currently, in their capital reserve fund, counting this year's money, it's about 465,000. What we're asking for today is about 75,000 of that to use to the addition of the burn building. It'll be two additional rooms on the front of the building, it'll be a balcony area, which we know is really important training for our firefighters to do, especially with the development of Madison Heights, all those apartments have balconies on them. So that would be for great training. And then part of it is for, about 23,000 would be used for concrete around the fire training facility that's all gravel right now. So total, we're asking for 75,000.
Thank you. Board members, any questions?
Madam Chair, I was at the Emergency Service Council meeting, so I'll, again, being that these are not additional requested funds that we've got to come up with, and I know this has been a huge asset for, for the emergency services focused on doing the training down there, even for, for chief beams, new hired staff, as well as the volunteers, so I, I think we've heard as many times in this, in our meetings of, of how, how well this thing is, is gone and continues to go for the county. So, with that being said, I move the board to approve this 75,000 for the addition to the Amherst County Burn Building, with the funds to be allocated from the Amherst County Emergency Services Council Capital Budget Reserve.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose no, motion passes. Thank you. And thank you for being very creative and finding out a way to get that done.
Oh, no, it's great, great. Did, did you have a question, Mr. Martin?
I was just going to say my normal, I'm the chief of Amherst Fire Department, but this is not related to Amherst Fire Department, and I feel I can vote on it objectionably, so.
All right, please make sure that that's noted in our, in our minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, board.
All right, next up, we have got a resolution supporting the VDOT Economic Development, Ms. Hanson.
Good afternoon. So I'm Victoria Hanson, Economic Development Authority, and with me I have Jay Brown with VDOT, and we're here to ask for your support resolution for a VDOT Economic Development Access Funding Grant that we are going to be applying for, for the Dillard Industrial Site. And do we have that as in something I can show the? It was one of the attachments. So as you all know, we've been working really hard on the Dillard Site. It's 545 acres in Madison Heights, that is zoned industrial. You all helped us with the rezoning of the Lot B, and it has a huge capacity to be an economic development project that could be transformative for Amherst County. That's why we're going so hard on this site. It's very rare to find an industrial site that has all your different utilities. It's the only one like it in the region that has both rail and gas served. The Lot D actually had, could have a million square foot building on it. We've had two prospects already come down through the state. One of them is a $1.5 billion prospect with about 400 great paying jobs, and the other one is more like 219 million. So it is being looked at by a lot of different potential prospects, also because it has transmission lines from APCO going through the site, which allows it to be heavy industrial. So
Before you get started, because we've got people watching remotely, can you, I know that Mr. Brown is with VDOT, in what capacity?
I'm the Director for Program Management for Lynchburg District, out of the district office.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so when you have an industrial site like that, that's going to have semi-trucks and people coming in and out of it, of course, you have to plan for that traffic. We did have, as part of the Virginia Business Writing and Sites Program, previous grant that we have been working on, a lot of due diligence, including a traffic impact analysis. And that showed that there needed to be some road upgrades and infrastructure put in if and when this prospect were to come. So in anticipation of that, we've been working, the EDA has been working with VDOT about how can we approach this? This would be for a design-only grant. It is not construction. And what it would do is design different roads that are going to be impacted by the site if and when we get our prospect. So first one, I'm happy to say that the county community development already put in this proposed improvement into smart scale. So it is already being designed right now for 100-foot taper, and they said probably next month, design's done, and then they're going to do right of way, and then probably in 2026, in the middle of the, the year in June, they're expecting to have construction done. So that's good news for us. This is, was already in the planning, and so we don't have to worry about this one. So up here, you can see Lot D, that's the very large lot, the potential for a million square foot pad, and where Mitchell Bell comes out up the top, and it's going to feed into 130, and there's going to be traffic coming down Dillard Road. They're looking for some turn lanes at that location. Which, as you know, there's a lot of traffic there anyways. Whether or not there's ever an industrial prospect there, it'll still be a really healthy thing for the county. And then for additional access for that large lot, and then also for Lot B, there'll there'll be, need to be turn lanes on Dillard. And this shows the secondary access road going into Lot D. So how the, the design grant works is you all say yes, you support this grant request. It goes up to the Commonwealth Transportation Board. Right now, it's looking to go in on February eighteenth to be presented, and then March eighteenth for approval and funding. At that point, we would come back to you with, and need a resolution saying you will put funds aside in surety for the design-only portion of the grant, which we've put in here close to a half a million. That's the maximum amount you can get without triggering a match. So at this point, there is no match for this grant. It would just be a reimbursable grant, up to a half million in design services for these specific needs. With that first turn lane already being designed, we think that'll be less than that five hundred thousand. But until we actually go through procurement, we won't know exactly how much it costs. And then after funding gets approved, then we'll get a project agreement with VDOT, and we'll actually start doing the design. Once we're through that, design should be a year to a year and a half, but it is not completed and finished, and the surety released until VDOT has actually approved the design plans. So that's where the variance in some of that time goes from. Is there anything you wanted to add?
No, I don't think so, I'll answer his questions.
Madam Chair, and I might be putting the cart before the horse, Mr. Brown, but as far as the site review, probably partic- more particularly on the, on the Dillard and One Thirty end, with what is proposed at the One Thirty end, not where? What, what were you saying right there, Ms. Hanson? Right, the, the projected would be right there at Shabool Hotman, and between Shabool Hotman and H.T. Hackney, that would be another access point coming from Mitchell Bell back out to Dillard Road?
Yes.
Is that correct?
If, if, when you look on there, where you're seeing the blue dotted line, that's a secondary access road going into Lot D. So your primary access would come up through Mitchell Bell, and go down through this, this top red piece. And that will be the primary access and the fastest access into Lot D. However, because there is a rail spur there, if there were, you know, this was a business, a lot of people and semi-trucks coming in and out of, and you had a stack of rail cars sitting on the spur, you'd need a secondary access for emergency services. So that is what the secondary access road would be for. It wouldn't be the primary entrance, it would be a secondary access road.
And, and this is, this was, as far as the, the access on easements and right-of-ways, this is all in the property that you guys are currently looking at, correct? Is, are there any other private, outside property owners that this would be?
This may affect on right-of-way. So what, one thing this grant doesn't do is doesn't purchase right-of-way. That would be something completely different. But the design is just designing what we would need, and then the next step is right-of-way and actually construction.
Sure, okay. And then on the One Thirty end, Mr. Brown, I think that's on the previous slide, would that require some additional land acquisition from private parties as well? Or would all of this be within what is now the state right-of-way? Or can you answer that yet?
It is unknown until they get into the design.
Okay.
But there's possibility that it would require additional.
All right, thank you, sir. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Mr. Martin, you had some questions when we first heard about this. Have your, all your questions?
I did, I just, I think I had most of them answered. But Ms. Hanson, so the county's being asked to put five hundred thousand aside for surety, okay?
That's correct.
So what I heard you say is that this was a reimbursable grant.
Yes.
So does the EDA have the five hundred thousand to pay for this up front? Or how's that gonna work?
The good news is we don't pay five hundred thousand right up front. It is as the work is being done, and like many of these, your design starts out at ten thousand, and the next bill you get is twenty thousand. And so you seek reimbursement as each one comes through.
So pay as you go?
As you go.
Well, pay, get reimbursed, pay some more.
Yeah, how, okay, and not to interrupt you, but how does that work? If, if it's a pay-as-you-go, do we get reimbursed as we go? Or is it a lump sum when it's completed and get, get the lump sum reimbursement?
It should be as we're paying, we should get reimbursed. Is that your understanding?
Okay.
Yeah, that's correct. You, you request reimbursement as you make your payment to your consultant that's doing the design.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Hanson.
What I also, you're welcome. What I also think is exciting is that we have not had a design-only Economic Development Access Fund in the entire district that anyone is aware of before. So it's, it's fun to be a trailblazer, and we'll figure this out as we go. But we're excited to see this site get one more step closer to a prospect, because the more we can get done in advance of a prospect showing up, the more likely somebody is gonna come, and, and we can move quicker to that capital investment and the jobs that it will bring.
So, we've talked about this before, but just for the sake of our citizens, if you receive the grant, and you're putting the money out up front, and then you're being reimbursed for it, reimbursed for it, why the need for the county to put a surety out there?
That's a great VDOT question.
So the surety is strictly for a situation where the county would come in and cancel the project prior to meeting the requirements of the grant. So the grant that you're applying for is for the design only, but we need to make sure that that design is complete prior to fulfilling the requirements of the grant.
But is it?
So if there is some situation where the county were to cancel the project prior to that, VDOT would request reimbursement for anything reimbursed to date.
But who's applying for the grant, the county or the EDA? So the county?
The grant is being done through the county.
Oh, the grant's being done through the county.
That's correct.
I see. So we could cancel it, I see what you're saying. Okay. So, Mr. Bryant, I asked you this, so this is five hundred thousand that we're gonna tie up for twelve to eighteen months, and what effect this has on our reserves or general fund?
Yeah, I talked with Ms. McBride about that, and we would have to set that money aside in the general fund. So we set it aside. Ms. McBride assured me that we were in an okay position to do that. Speak now, forever hold your peace, Ms. McBride.
Because that's an entire fiscal year.
Correct.
And, and some?
And some, yep. So I fully support our Economic Development Authority, and you guys have done some great things, and I fully support you on this. I just have to do my due diligence in asking those questions.
Sitting that five hundred thousand dollars aside, does that do anything to our credit rating? Or are auditors gonna look at us and give us a stink eye? It's, all's good?
Madam Chair, I say with the work you've done at the AMALON Center, that's amazing. So hopefully you get some tenant in there as quick as possible with that. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution for the Dillard Site.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Wade, everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes. Thank you. Mr. Brown?
Thank you.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you very much.
All right, next we have Mr. Bean, Chief Beam's back again. We need a vehicle, do we?
Hello, board. Long time no talk. No, thank you all for having me back up this afternoon. This vehicle purchase is really a necessity for continuity of operation. Right now, we have a captain's vehicle, the one that you all allowed us to purchase after we had a collision last year. The problem is, is we don't have a good vehicle that, we don't have a Plan B, if that makes sense. Right now, we had the captain's vehicle, we planned to use that as our kind of alternate vehicle as we needed it. Unfortunately, that vehicle was totaled in an accident. We were using a Tahoe that was from, I think, twenty fourteen, that Mr. Roach originally purchased when he was the director, as our reserve vehicle. We did that during the construction of the new vehicle we got. And we really found out that we had a lot of failures in that vehicle. It had to be towed multiple times, ended up in the shop multiple times, had a hundred and ninety-five thousand miles on it. We've downgraded that to a non-emergency response vehicle now, so it has no lights on it, no sirens on it. Our fire inspectors use it to, to do some fire inspections in the community, but not emergency response. So what this does is it gives us a vehicle that if we have to push into service, but also a lot of days, when we're, when we have the benefit of having a full shift for that day, we can put someone in that vehicle and have a second paramedic responding, typically in the Madison Heights community, that's where our highest call volume is. So this would be funds used from the Sullivan ambulance, some other funds that have been uncommitted to this point, working with Ms. McBride and Mr. Bryant. And so that's really what this is. It doesn't get us a vehicle to the level we bought for the captains before. As you know, things are very expensive now. So we will do the best we can to have a very suitable vehicle. If, on, quite frankly, if we're not able to, to get everything we need, my commitment to my staff is that I will transfer my vehicle over to them to use for, for this. And then I will use these funds to purchase a more basic vehicle for myself.
I've actually suggested that we put Chief Beam in a Prius.
Seems more like a Pinto guy.
What, what was that?
Pinto, maybe.
Well, we can find a souped-up Pinto, maybe we can do that.
That would be your first extrication with some of your new tools.
If he stopped hitting deer, you know?
Well, this is true.
Mm, mm, it's rough.
Too soon.
Rough crowd, rough crowd.
I do have a question. I mean, because we, we have a plan on how we do this, and when, when we come, you know, kind of mid-cycle and have to get another vehicle, that always bothers me a little bit. But then I see this total appropriation, ninety-three thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars. Is that how much this vehicle's gonna, we think it's gonna cost us?
We're, we're, yes, we will make that happen, yes, ma'am.
No, I mean, I'm thinking that's like really, it's just like a suburban, right?
Oh, yeah, yes, ma'am. Honestly, to build the, what our captains respond in, the Ford pickup truck F-350 with slide-out and all that, is a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars right now. It's, I know the sheriff's dealing with the same thing on patrol vehicles and things. It's, this honestly is a basic F-150 pickup truck with lights, sirens, console in the middle, and one cabinet to keep turnout gear and stuff in, and that's, that's it. Things are, are super expensive, and, and I'm glad you mentioned that, Madam Chair, about off-cycle. We had hoped that, that we had that reserve vehicle. The captain's vehicle they were currently driving only had about a hundred thousand miles. We thought that was gonna be a good reserve. Unfortunately, it was involved in the collision, so that, that got wiped out. The Tahoe was-
The insurance proceeds?
We did, and you, we applied that to what we bought last year, the one that you bought for us. And then was working with the sheriff, we thought maybe he had something that we were gonna be able to use, used vehicle. But he's in the same boat we are, putting everything he has on the streets. We weren't able to do that. So that's kind of what led us here, because we, we're real nervous of not having that continuity of operation if we had a catastrophic event happen.
Mr. Wade?
I've got one question for you.
Yes, sir.
One of the items you have here is funding from the CPR devices.
Uh, yes, sir.
Can you just confirm that, that, that's savings we had?
Yeah, that's a great point. So we did, thank you. Yep. So we got all the devices, they're working great. Many of you, I know a couple of our board members have seen them in action. They're on all of our vehicles, but we actually got a really decent trade-in for the old models that we got rid of. So that trade-in value is what we're using for, for this.
Thank you.
All right, Emergency Services, two guys down there, y'all good?
I, I, I fully support this. I, I'm sure Mr. Martin will have some sentiments as well. But I, I think as a sidebar conversation, Mr. Bryant, going forward, not to get too much into my previous life, but, you know, we've talked about it in here that you guys have established replacement cycles for fire trucks and ambulances, right? These folks at Public Safety are beating the street on these four hundred and seventy-some square miles, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week now. And these shift captains are running their hind end off, as well as these four medic units, trying to keep up. I, I, I mean, of course, Mr. Martin, I've been, he's been involved, I've been listening the last several days, and they've been taking a beating. So the, these folks are racking up miles in these vehicles, and, I mean, it's, they're not unnecessary miles, right? I think we need to do a better job as a board, establish a replacement cycles for the emergency vehicles, to where we're not placed in positions like this, Ms. Tucker.
I thought we had studied that, that real hard and done our homework. So, or what you're saying is?
We're, we're doing-
A replacement cycle is not adequate?
We're doing the replacement cycles on the fire engines, like the big heavy fire apparatus and the ambulances, right? But the support vehicles, as we call these, right? We're, unless it's something I'm not aware of, we, we don't have a quote-unquote replacement cycle for those established.
Mr. Adams, I think what, what you're saying is you would like, because a lot of times we were ranking these items against other, other things, like public works vehicles. So you're, what you're asking us to do is do our best to try to build it into the operating budget.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a great point. We're, we're kind of at a point now where we probably need one a year of the SUV-style, the, those type vehicles, because the captain's vehicle, you know, racks up miles, and then all the other auxiliary staffs. So that, we're, we're probably approaching that, that point.
Might as well, a hundred thousand dollars a year for these vehicles.
Yeah, and again, this is on the low side. You know, we'll have one that, the, the bigger ones, that have all the cabinetry, are more expensive. We're trying to, like with this one, figure out a way to, to do the, some of the less stuff in them.
Yeah, I'll, I'll echo what Mr. Bryant said, Madam Chair, not Mr. Bryant, Mr. Adams. Yeah, these vehicles are absolutely necessary. You know, the captains kind of rove, but they're lifesaving vehicles, right? And I know, at least on the fire side, ours are quick-response vehicles, where we can get places a lot quicker than we can get crew to the station and, and, you know, an engine out. So yeah, I fully support it. I fully support a set replacement plan for our fire engines, which we had up until last year. We were on a twenty-year schedule. I also believe last year, we had the medic units in your operating budget, and that got pulled out for some reason. So I'd like for us to revisit that at some point. So yeah, I'll, I'll be supporting this.
Mr. Adams, a question for you.
Sure.
Looking at this in a comprehensive, holistic fashion for all these vehicles, whether it's a fire, we know we got the fire trucks and the big stuff covered, the things y'all are talking about now. Is that something that should be done by Emergency Services Council? And get recommendations from them, or how would you proceed?
I think if you look locality to locality, again, in my previous life, we, we were, we were, we had a large enough fleet where we actually had a fleet director that managed this stuff, and it was up to that position to manage the replacement cycle, whether it be a, a passenger car for social services, or a fire engine for the fire department, or a police car for the police department, or it could be a backhoe for public works, right? That, that one position covered everybody, right? I think, I don't think we're, I don't think we can afford to do that, right? Because we don't have our own fleet shop or anything as such. But I think we, as a board and county administration, can probably do better for, for long-range planning, because like Chief Beam was saying, we, we should be able to plan for some sort of support vehicle at a minimum of twelve to eighteen months, every twelve to eighteen months, right? Because that's, that's what they're gonna, I, I'd, I'd be curious to see how many miles they've already got on Eight-O-Six now.
I think it's well over twenty already.
So twenty thousand miles on a vehicle that's been in service for, what, less than two months? Two to three months?
Probably about four, I would say.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, time flies when we're having fun, right? So that puts it in perspective. So if you, if you do that twenty thousand miles over four months, I mean, that's gonna, they're easily gonna put anywhere between sixty and seventy thousand miles a year on that vehicle. And once you get to a point, what, in, just with my history with dealing with this stuff, because I've managed to, our fire department fleet in Lynchburg, when we got to a hundred and forty, a hundred and fifty thousand miles, those support vehicles, we were pulling them out of service, because at that point, they were costing us more to maintain, plus the out-of-service time and the dependability, when it gets to that point, drops off significantly, drastically. So we need to be proactive and plan ahead for this.
So my question is, is that something Emergency Services Council should make a recommendation?
No, I don't think it's a-
The board should do it?
No.
Should he do it?
It's gonna be up, I mean, for his vehicles, it's gonna be up to Chief Beam.
I, I think, I think as a county, we should look at, and this could be Chief Beam and Emergency Services Council, whoever, I think it's really fairly simple. I think these support vehicles should be based on mileage, right? I think the fire apparatus should be based on age. And the ambulances, would you say mileage also?
Yes, sir. We, we just took one out this week, it had about a hundred and eighty-five thousand miles on it, that we lost the motor.
So I would think as part of the ongoing budget discussions that we're gonna start and- and have great work sessions on, right? We should look at the replacement schedule, right, for these things, and just come back to a recommendation with us. I think we already know what it is, is figuring out how to accomplish it, so, yeah.
I don't want to beat a dead horse. Mr. Bryant, is there any other part of local government that has vehicles that we would need to look at them and include them in this?
Yeah, there is. I mean, Sheriff's Department and Public Works, I mean, that's one of the things that we, because as Mr. Adams pointed out, being a small locality, we're always ranking what's the highest need. Is it a, is it a new landfill, a truck on the landfill, a compact, compactor in the landfill? Is it a, a compactor at Coolwell versus ambulance versus? So the fleet discussion continues to increase, certainly as we grow services, like in public safety, for example. That will be a higher priority for us as we move into this budget cycle, and how, how to try to tackle that.
Yeah. All right. Well, we need a motion.
I'll, I'll do that, Madam Chair. So I'll move that the board appropriate the, the twenty-nine thousand from the sale of them, once the twenty-nine zero ninety-eight from the LATCF funds, the sixty-six seventy-two of CARES, healthcare funds, for the purchase of a public safety vehicle. In addition, I move that the ten-five of supplemental savings and the seventeen-nine-fifty-two of CIP savings be transferred to the purchase of a public safety vehicle.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Adams. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion.
With the same disclaimer.
Okay. Yeah, make sure the minutes include the disclaimer from Mr. Martin.
Thank you very much.
I want to stop here, thank Brad and his staff and all the volunteers. Brad hadn't been home since Sunday to deal with the storm. It's, I know a lot of you are aware of the, the hours that Public Safety puts in and Brad and his team, but thank you, and go get some sleep, please.
It's been, been good. Mr. Martin and I spent a couple hours together on the bypass, Sunday night in the snow, so it's been a great teamwork between the volunteers, the career staff, our Public Works Department, social services, schools. We've really had a great partnership, and that's what's kept our community safe and going. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Brad.
All right, next, we've got Mr. Nixon.
I, I told him I handled this for him, but he looks so good with his plaid shirt on, matching his, the county logo.
I don't know how to comment on that. Thank you, thank you, board. Coming to you with requests for funding for our Coolwell field lights. We currently have two whole poles, which is approximately fifteen lights that are out on the fields. We have additional lights that are out, I think up to three other light bulbs out of sixty-two total lights. It's becoming a safety issue for our teams that participate in soccer. We have opened up our baseball softball field, hadn't been used for a long time, and we've got it worked on with our new field machine that y'all provided for us. And we have teams practicing on that in the evenings that need the lights. One of the light poles out is on third base side of that field. The other light pole that is out is down towards Coolwell Road, towards the convenience center. And then some of the other lights are sporadic throughout the, the total fields, the field lights. But we're requesting about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the fines and forfeiture funds, which are set aside for the, for our parks. And we, what we're requesting is, originally to fix those lights, we're probably looking at fifteen to twenty thousand dollars, but it's just a Band-Aid, because these lights are twenty-five to thirty years old. I think they were put in in the mid-nineties. And we're going to have the same problem probably next year, we're coming up on spring soccer in March. But we feel like we can get a retrofit of our current poles, lights, and put in LED lights for about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And it will help us solve the issues for probably ten years to come, instead of having to come back and ask for another fifteen to twenty thousand, probably this summer or next fall, probably. And that's basically the crunch of it.
And if I could clarify one thing, the, what we put in your summary sheet includes the totals of what's left for the twenty percent for fines and forfeiture. So twenty percent of the funds goes to Parks and Recreation, and that number that's in your staff report reflects the twenty percent. So in short, we have a hundred and, I'm missing it now, a hundred and-
Eighty-six, five, six, seven?
Yeah, I didn't scroll. Hundred and eighty-six thousand. Using this, we'll still leave thirty-six thousand. We anticipate more, because we anticipate the bids coming lower than a hundred and fifty, but we're asking for enough to cover the bids.
So, Madam Chair, if I may, my, my question, well, a, a couple questions and comments. So the, the fine and forfeitures, that, that money that the county, obviously, that's a, that's a split between us and the sheriff's office, right?
Eighty-twenty.
Eighty-twenty, right?
Eighty-twenty.
Okay. So our, our twenty percent, we're, we're at the twenty percent, correct?
Right.
Eighty percent goes to the sheriff's office. That twenty percent was set aside for Parks and Recs-
Correct.
-purposes only.
Yes.
Okay? So, and this may be a Ms. McBride question, but what, what are we averaging on fines and things of that nature on a monthly basis now? I know there was a significant uptick, but, and, and if you can't right now, that's fine. This is just for, just for informational purposes.
It is increasing, but I don't know what it is.
So it has been, it has been incre, yes, okay. I, I guess my only concern with this is, and I, my memory is I was going, doing my homework on the agenda last night, was, was this a CIP approach to us in the budget season last year?
Yes. Yeah, we were looking at, I got a quote from Musco Lighting, who put the original lights in, and I think the quote you got was to redo everything, the poles, everything, and it was five hundred and some thousand dollars. This is going to retrofit what we have. I actually contacted Robert Kerr from the high school, and Mr. Lawrence out of North Carolina came up and looked at it for me. They do a lot of work for the high school, and we discussed it and feel like this could be a, not that they're going to get the bid or anything, we will have to put it out the bid, but there's companies that retrofit what we have. The poles are fine, the electric lines are fine, most of the stuff there is fine, there's no reason to go in and tear all that out. But we can fix this problem for years to come versus having to Band-Aid it, is the idea, so.
I guess, just, just my comment, I, when, when we're looking at something of an expenditure this size, even though those monies are set aside from fine and forfeitures, I, I just, for me, I feel like it's, this is more appropriate to being a CIP project. I understand the need, and I a hundred percent support Coolwell, or anything to Parks and Recs, because I mean, that, seeing kids out there on a Saturday morning or nighttime, and now all of these fields full of kids playing soccer, I mean, that is freaking awesome, right? But as far as for planning purposes, you know?
Ms. Tucker?
Yes, sure.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, you're, you're right. Generally, we try really hard as staff to be a watchdog for what goes on the agenda, just like Mr. Beam's vehicle. We don't like it out of cycle, I don't like it out of cycle. Mr. Nixon brought a concern that this is an operational issue from, from spring soccer coming up. And so we brought it to your attention, and the reason it's out of cycle and on your, on the agenda is because we thought it was enough concern that we needed to put it before you, and we, we, we brought what we thought was a solution that wasn't pulling from the general fund, and was coming from funds that were already set aside for Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, and I'm fine, and I'm assuming these are energy-efficient lighting?
Yes, it's LED lighting. Will save a lot of money just in electricity costs. Because I think, correct me, Stacey, if I'm wrong, you may not know this, but our average for nine months that we pretty much use those fields and lights, probably averages six or seven hundred dollars just for the field lights a month, easily that. So we'll save money, you know, in the long, in the long run, and the maintenance cost.
Mr. Wade?
A question for you. So if we approve this today, are you saying these can be retrofitted before soccer starts up? What's the timeline?
That, it's going to be, no, probably not, but it's going to be, we're going to have to limp through probably soccer. The good thing about spring soccer is we only need the lights probably, because it gets lighter later, stays lighter later, so falls when it's really bad. But, yeah, it's the first part of the season, March, April, tends to be a little harder, but we, we can get through it. But I'm just worried somebody's going to get hurt. You know, we can, we can tailor schedules a little bit, but it's, it's, makes it tough.
So, back to the question, though, if, if we do approve this, how long do you think before they're retrofitted? How long do you think it'll be? I mean, you've got to go up-
Well, we've got to go up the bid, we've got to get the bids in, then we've got to, you know, get the contract. You're probably, and then, then again, it depends on who gets the contract, when they're available to do it. So you're probably looking three to six months, probably. I'm hoping to get it done by the fall.
All right, thank you, sir.
In reality.
So doing this today, Madam Chair, is basically preparing you for fall?
Pretty much, probably.
Waited till the budget was adopted, you'd be beyond the fall?
Yes, yep. I'd be next spring, probably.
Got you. Okay.
I have one comment, and, and it's not meant to be critical, so I'll say that upfront. The five hundred thousand dollars that we looked at and did not, didn't meet the cut line, that, that number just like, you know, took me back. And now we go and we get creative, and we do some homework, and we can get our problem solved for one fifty. So-
Yeah, well, we learn.
Now, every time I see something like that, I'm going to say, hey, have you looked at other, have you looked, have, how creative have you been?
Right. I understand that.
Not you personally.
Well, no, I take, I'm responsible for it, so, yeah, I'll take that. That's on me.
Any other questions?
I should have called Mr. Kerr sooner.
Live and you learn.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions? Not, is there a motion?
I move the board appropriate a hundred and fifty thousand of county fine and forfeitures funds for the retrofit of the Coolwell Park lights.
All right, there's a motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Lights are acoming.
Thank you.
All right, now, we will go to the EDA vacancy, and lucky for us, Mr. Eby has requested his term be extended. Board members, what's the discussion on this?
I think he's a great member. I fully support his reappointment to the EDA. And with that, I'd make a motion that we appoint Chad Eby to the, for a third term.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Martin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Thank you. Please convey that to Mr. Eby Jeremy.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, now, we will go to our liaison and committee reports. Mr. Pugh, can you, whoop, did I miss something? Oh, county attorney, sorry, counselor.
That's okay, I, I have nothing at this time, anyway.
Yeah, sensed that.
That's all right.
All right, Mr. Pugh?
All right, we had a planning commission on December nineteenth, and we had a public hearing regarding the Florida Overlay District. Of course, you saw that today, and we're going to have to pass that in the next couple weeks. Also, we had a non-public hearing that was regarding the Timothy Waldron property on Twenty-Nine North. There was a special exception for like a truck storage area. And that was brought back before us, and the board voted five to one to not rescind the special exception. So that will come before us, I guess, later this month, and we'll make a determination on it. I will say Mr. Waldron has been responsive, he's been to all the meetings, he's, he has worked and did as much as he could. I think he's run into some issues, but he has put a good faith effort in trying to remediate some of the, the problems. So I guess that was the reason that the planning commission voted in favor of not to rescind his special exception. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Pugh. Mr. Adams, Emergency Services Council?
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. So, nothing, nothing super huge report from the ESC. We have another meeting tomorrow night at six PM. We're, I don't think really it's anything major on it, other than progressing forward with the SOGs and SOPs, correct, Chief Beam? The only other thing I, I would just want to address, because obviously, because of the, the incredible power of social media, right, wrong, or indifferent, I'm sure everybody has seen, and obviously it made it to social media, as far as the operations of an Elsinore Rescue Squad, which ceased at the end of December thirty-first, I mean, November thirtieth, excuse me, November thirtieth, at midnight. So Chief Beam and myself, and then Mr. Bryant as well, we're still continuing to work in close cooperation with their board to see, well, how we can assist going forward. And again, you know, from the citizens, we want to make sure that, from a communication standpoint, we want, because again, there was, obviously, we all know how social media is, and, and the, well, I'll leave it at that. And we want to make sure that we ensure our citizens on the south end, that we have proper coverage for emergency services down there, with two, two ambulances being in there twenty-four seven now. And so I just wanted to make sure that we, we addressed that in open session. Since, since, you know, since our last meeting, it's been quite a bit of attention on it at Facebook and so forth. So, Chief Beam, anything else that you can think of that we need to address? Okay. Madam Chair, that's all we have at this point in time.
Thank you, and appreciate all the work that they're doing. All right, we'll now open up the meeting for citizen comments. Anyone here wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing none, we will close citizen comments and turn to matters from members of the board. Mr. Adams?
Yes, Madam Chair. So the, the only thing I have, I want to bring up to the, to the, my fellow board members, and I've talked to Mr. Bryant about this, and I've actually had an opportunity to speak to Ms. Hanson about this, and, and Mr. Proctor on the, on the EDA yesterday. You know, I, I posed a question, obviously, since my first go around the board, the composition of the EDA is completely different than what I was used to before. And as I expressed to Ms. Hanson and Mr. Proctor, I had a discussion with Mr. Kielor last night, I, I think we all are very excited with the direction of our EDA, right? Nobody, I don't think we can ever, at this point in time, disagree with that. I had posed a question, and this was not for any, I wanted to make sure that it was expressed, that it was not for any negative reason. It was basically just to show additional support, because we have such a positive direction from the, from the, from the EDA, and, you know, Ms. Hanson and Ms. Saunders, that whether we would like to evaluate having a liaison from, from the board supervisors on the EDA. We have liaisons or voting members on just, well, I think every other group in the county, with an exception of the EDA. I would not be, i-if, again, this is open for discussion, and we don't have to make a decision today, clearly, because I think we probably have to do some legal homework on that before we can move forward anyway, that we would have to defer to Mr. Popovich. I'm not, I'm not going to lose any sleep over it one way or the other. I'm not looking for this to be a voting member on the EDA by any means. I don't think that that would be the correct way to handle this, because I, as I told Ms. Hanson and Mr. Proctor, I would not want to do anything to slow them down, right? I'm all about the pedal to the floor board. But I think for informational transfer between us and the board, and the EDA, I can see a lot of benefits from having that liaison from the board on the EDA. That's just my personal opinion. So I'm glad Ms. Hanson stuck around, and I don't, again, I want to bring this up, if we wanted to have any discussion on it. But for me, I, I just, I, I feel moderately strong about it, so. Other than that, I didn't have anything else to address today.
Mr. Adams, is there anything that you need staff to do, other than get some information from your attorney?
Well, I think before we commit our staff to do that, I think that I would like to see what my fellow board members, how, how my fellow board members feel about that. You know, the, the, the other four of you may not feel that this is necessary, or, or is, is needed. And I'm not saying it is needed, I just think it's a good, again, a good continued relationship builder between the two.
I'll, I'll give you my two cents for what it's worth. I think that liaisons can be a blessing and a curse. I, I think a lot of times when a board member shows up, it kind of changes the entire dynamics of a, of a meeting. And, you know, quite frankly, I think the EDA is, I can't say the word, is, is rolling right along.
Yeah.
Doing awesome, wouldn't change a thing. So I wouldn't want to do anything to change the momentum they, they have. You know, Ms. Hanson, when they've got something, she calls, I mean, they track my butt down, make sure that they-
It was just me.
I cannot get away, so I mean-
There's a reason for that, Mr. Bryant.
I mean, so yeah, I mean, I think really, right now, success is great, I wouldn't mess with it myself, but that's me.
That's you.
Um, well, Mr. Martin gave a pretty persuasive argument there. I was thinking to myself that the planning commission has a member of the EDA that sits in some of the board members, and we sit on various boards as well. But I guess, I mean, you do make a valid point about changing the dynamics of the board by adding an additional person. I like Tom, Ms. Hanson has always got a hold of me anytime that she has needed me, calls multiple times, texts, whatever it is, and have never kept me out in the dark on any issues that I can see. So I suppose, at this point, it seems to be going well, there's no misappropriation of funds or things that are going on that makes you think they need some more oversight. I mean, or whatever reason it may be, I'm not even, I'm just using that as an example.
It was none of the such, I mean-
Yeah, yeah, I'm not saying it is. I was just merely using it. But that would be a reason to do it, in my estimation. Oh, years ago, we were worried about, you know, where is the penny going? How is it being spent? And I was concerned, because I didn't think there was any accountability from the board. You know, we appointed them, but you know, other than that, there was no real accountability as how that money was spent. So I've had a difference of opinion on different items, and it had nothing to do with you.
Yeah.
So just, but, that all being said, I think they've done a good job. We have some really good people on that board. And I would just leave it as is. And maybe over time, if we think we need that, we can certainly look at it or have a deeper discussion on it.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah, I like the thought, but I'll have to agree with Mr. Martin and Mr. Pugh on this. I think changing up any kind of part of that dynamic, it's like throwing a manager into any meeting with a bunch of engineers, and engineers are gonna clam up.
We know what engineers are like.
I know. My bad. So I think what Ms. Hanson and her team have got going on right now, I think it's working great. I like the direction they're going. I don't wanna do anything to jeopardize that, so I don't see any, at this time.
And that's fine. So the majority rules, and that I have, again, I have no, again, I can't be any clear of how, how much I am expressing how great they are doing. But my, again, I'm not trying to sell my point, but if a citizen, and again, as I expressed to Ms. Hanson, if a citizen, we're funding, right? We're funding the EDA. And if a citizen asks questions, again, for informational purposes, I think it gave us a little bit of a leg up to be able to provide readily information, right?
Well, I have a suggestion. I mean, I don't know if we get a quarterly report from the EDA, annual, you know, that's something we could look at. You know, maybe if there is something going on that's pertinent, that we could receive an update, I don't know how we would do that, whether it be a quarterly report or something of that nature. I don't know if it's worthwhile, it's just something to think about, some way to communicate what they're doing to you.
Yeah. And that's fine, again. I'm good, Madam Chair.
All right. Well, I think you've heard everything from all of us, and your takeaway from that should be that you have a strong vote of confidence from this board. So, thanks for everything y'all are doing. Let's see, citizens' comments, Mr. Martin? I mean, board supervisors, Mr. Martin, anything you gotta say?
Uh, not at this time, thank you.
Mr. Pugh?
I have nothing.
Mr. Wade?
Yeah, I would like to thank the service authority, the emergency services personnel, half-county staff, who've kind of been helping folks out over the past few days with the winter conditions, so appreciate that. It doesn't go unnoticed, I know we've had some water outages, power outages, you name it, we've had it. So thank y'all for that. The last thing I wanna say is, now that I'm not chair, I just wanna thank y'all for the opportunity last year. I enjoyed it. I appreciate each and every one of y'all, so I know we don't always agree on things, but we kept it peaceful, so I appreciate that. I wanna offer my appreciation to staff as well. Jeremy, you, Stacy, everybody, Victoria, y'all made it a successful year, so I'd say everything went fairly smooth. And then to the trust of the citizens, so thank y'all for that.
Mr. Wade, we appreciate your service, and as I told you recently, you did an exceptional job. I mean, you just blew my expectations out of the water. Not that they were low, but you just did a great job, and I appreciate your service, your insights, and that engineer mind comes in handy.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Bryant, did you have anything?
No, I do not, but now that, I feel like I left Stacy out and wanted to thank her too. The audit was a big, big lift, and moving from being late on an audit to bringing this one up on time, I just wanted to thank her and her staff. They worked really, really hard behind the scenes trying to get it done, so I was remiss and forgot to do that, so I'm sorry about that, but thank you.
All right, if there's nothing further, is there a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Meeting's adjourned.